Do you guys want to buy a ticket for a raffle for three baby calves and a mama calf for a hundred bucks?
Ready to do it. I already bought one, bought two of them.
Did you?
From Edward Castillo.
Yeah.
Bring me one Clyde.
Alright.
They're only selling so many, right Clyde?
I'm guessing we have like five or eight tickets left, so.
It was the drawing in June sometime, isn't it?
What's that?
The drawing's in June sometime, isn't it?
June 3rd.
June 3rd.
Next week.
It's supposed to be May the 3rd, but we moved it back a month. Because of the epidemic. We want to see them over here at the. Church over here in Olivia, we even brought them over here last week. They look pretty good.
Hello DeeDee.
How are y'all doing?
Doing good.
Going good.
That's good to hear.
Cindy, are you there?
You ask me a question?
Yes ma'am, I was wondering if you ever heard from that legal bunch from GBA?
Uh, yes, Sarah and I had a conversation with them.
Okay. I'll get with you later.
Hey David, how bad was the trash?
Oh man. Fourth of July, four days in a row.
Wow.
We filled up both small dumpsters and our thirty yard.
Man.
We filled, we filled everything up down in Fort Scott and, and then some.
Why can't they take their trash with them?
They, they even filled up the dumpster at the, at the community center.
Yeah, Saturday we went down there and the fire station started down toward the monument. I stopped counting at three hundred and fifty vehicles. We hadn't even hit the beach yet.
Man.
Yeah, somewhere I saw they had tents all the way from the beginning to the end.
Yeah.
People wanted to get out.
Well hopefully they didn't leave any remnants of the COVID behind.
Let's call a meeting to order.
Bow your heads please. Heavenly Father, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Please y'all may pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is stand. One nation, under God. To this liberty and justice for all.
And out of the Texas flag. Honor of Texas God.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
One state, one God.
Agenda item number four, general discussion of public matters and public participation. On agenda item number five. Here to report from Memorial Medical Center.
Good morning everyone. With COVID nineteen. It, of course significantly affected our April volumes and revenue in a negative manner. Our gross revenue compared to April of a year ago was down three million and ninety-four thousand or forty-six percent. In April, for our, our financials. We were able to recognize five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that came from the first stimulus as revenue. With us being able to recognize those funds as revenue for April, we had a loss of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven for the month. Some financial highlights related to COVID nineteen. Our first stimulus we received in April was a little over a million nine and that was for us and eight nursing homes that we work with. We reached out to BKD, our accounting firm, to help us determine how much belongs to who. From using. The guidelines from the government on how it was calculated, BKD came up with five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars was hours. And, and that's where we were able to recognize that as revenue because the stimulus funds are for loss revenue or for COVID-related expenses. And our lost revenue. Since the pandemic began is. More than the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, so we were able to recognize all of it. And then the, a million three fifty-four was determined to be for nursing homes. And so those funds were distributed to nursing homes and from BKD's calculations. Approximately fifteen thousand dollars was identified as a potential overpayment. And so we've, we have set that up as a liability. I think probably as time goes forward, there's a good chance that, that we get to keep those funds of the, of approximately fifteen thousand. In the month of May, we did get a stimulus payment designed for rural hospitals of three million six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And so on a go-forward basis and in May and, and future months, we will recognize. Part of that as revenue as we look at what our lost revenue is and then what our COVID-related expenses are. And so that, that was very good thing to, to get that stimulus payment there. We also got. Yes.
How much you say that payment was?
It was three million six hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. And so, and that was for rural hospitals was what it was designed for. And then they, and that was based upon, they were going to give a base amount to every hospital and then. More dependent upon expenses and then us as a larger critical access, we got a larger payment there. And so that, that is, is, I mean, it's huge to us to get that amount of funds. Of course. With that. Only God knows how long it's going to be before things return to normal. And so we're probably going to have months of, of lost revenue that, and that's going to be coming very, very. Important to, to help us in the coming months with that. And then we got forty-nine thousand dollars for our rural health clinic. And I've got to look at more details with that because I think it's, it's related to COVID nineteen but has to do with testing. And so I, I have to see how we utilize the funds for, for, for that. We also applied for and we received a grant from the State Office of Rural Health for eighty-four thousand dollars. And those funds are related to COVID nineteen for preventing diagnosing and treating. And so right now for April financials, I have that recognized as a liability. And then as we go through and identify expenses that can meet the grant criteria, then we will recognize those as income. And then with each of these, we have to do reporting. And so I'll, I'll get geared up to do that when it's time to do the reporting for those. Since I did my report, we also got another stimulus payment of over two million dollars. Now that one was specifically for our nursing homes. And so those funds are being distributed out to the, the nursing homes for that. And then we did get a, a small grant from the Texas Hospital Foundation of five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars related to the COVID nineteen. And so again, we'll be looking at the specifics of it to meet the criteria for that. And so when we look at our, our cash at the end of April. Our cash balance was up to six million, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in our operating account. And that was up from the million one at the end of March. And of course the driving factors there was receipt of that first stimulus payment of a million nine. And then where we had applied for and received advanced payments from the Medicare program. And we got three point seven million in advanced payments. And so with those, that increased our, our, our cash there. As of, when I did my CEO report of five twenty-one, our bank balance was actually up to nine million, one twenty-eight. Of course, we have outstanding checks and so that gave us eight million, three eighty-one in the bank. With that, that was because of receiving the three point six million in the stimulus for rural hospitals and the forty-nine thousand for, for clinics. But what we have upcoming in June is early June, we've got multiple intergovernmental transfers for the U-RIP program of a hundred and forty-four thousand. The Quip Nursing Home Program, a million, three thirty-seven. And then the uncompensated care program of four hundred and three thousand. So after those, we'll have approximately six point five million in the, in the bank. Then, and that's with the initial a million, three for nursing homes stimulus is already been, been processed there. And then looking at, at the board meeting for COVID nineteen, a few updates that Aaron had, gave us is for. Currently hospitals can't have. Unless special circumstances, can't have visitors for our inpatients. And so that causes a lot of anxiety for the patients and family members. And then we also, we can't have visitors in the emergency room with, with, with the patient. And so we, we have purchased some iPads that the physicians and nurses can use to communicate with family members. During this, this time, I think we will start using that this week to, to, to help with that. And then, and then we will be looking at those different grants or the, or the stimulus money as part, part of the expense to pay for that. And then for as testing goes, here at the hospital, we now can collect samples for the antibody testing and send that out to the CPL lab. And that, that, that's a blood test that tells if a person has a current or prior infection. You still use the, the nasal swab for the active, to determine if they have an active. Infection. And then nursing home testing, the governor had ordered that a hundred percent of nursing home residents and staff be tested. And so with that, the local racks got charged with doing it. And so for our part, we are, we are going to be doing testing for Portland, Baca Nursing and Rehab. And then Bethany Living asked us to train their staff on how to do it. So we're, we'll be doing that there. As, as we. Go forward, you know, looking at our cash right now, we're in a, currently in a good position. But part of that reason is we applied for the Medicare advanced funds where we got three point seven million dollars in advanced payments. Here come in August, then as it stands now, we would have to start paying that back through the withholding of, of claims. And historically, that would be around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month. I, I think it'd, it'd probably be less than that because our volumes are, are, are down with that. And, and that, that is one that I talked about last month that in healthcare they are pushing. And. For the, to be included in the next round of stimulus or assistance to hospitals is to forgive, forgive the Medicare advanced payments. Now if that materializes, that would be huge for us because we could, could, could keep those funds instead of having to, to pay those back. But only, only time will tell to see what happens with that. As we start to, to pay back, pay those funds back, then of course our, our cash will be dropping. And then of course, the reason why we got three point six million in rural health clinic stimulus is to help replace lost revenues. And so our collections for the next few months will be down. And so as I forecast towards the end of the year, I would still think it would be the same as I'd been forecasting earlier. Is to expect that the hospital would need to borrow funds from the county in November. And that would be around three million to meet our December intergovernmental transfer for the nursing home Quip program. And the December amount will be. About two point nine million dollars is what we're expecting there. So. With that, that payment, for the current payment, they lower the, they split the amounts between August and, and June. And so, so we have a lower amount to do there, but in the fall will be a, a larger number there. Now if, if by some miracle, if the Medicare advanced payments get approved or we don't have to pay that back, then, then that, that changes the, what our needs are in, in that, that regard there. Let's see, other things. And most years in the past, we've had BKD come present that, our annual audit in June. And so that's what our, our plan is currently. And then, and we hope with that is, anticipate with that is that we will actually have a live meeting. With everybody where they can come in, present that along with our, our cost report. The big focus for me right now is for me to really work on is the budget for 2021. Is the next big, big project. And in force, our, our agenda items for last night's board meeting, just approved our updated organization chart. With that, the updates is I had added the, the additional nursing homes that we've been working with recently to our organization chart. And in our current organization chart, I don't have a CFO as I'm doing CEO, CFO. I have hired a controller, another accounting person to help do a lot of the detail accounting. And I'm in the process of, of training with them for that. And then we went over a couple of different board orientation items. One, our customer service program. And then two, overview of our quality program. And then a third thing is the state required cybersecurity awareness. Training session. So I think those are the highlights I have this time. Be glad to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you Jason.
You're welcome.
On the agenda, six, approved minutes of April twenty-second, April twenty-ninth, May the sixth, and May thirteenth, 2020 meetings.
Mission list, I saw move.
Three, so second.
Any more discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number seven, consider taking necessary action to approve, accept, accept, affirm, and ratify the application submitted by Kalam County. For the purpose of securing grant funding under the County Transportation Infrastructure Fund, CTIF program. Including acceptance and approval of the following included. A, the acts of. Existed text dot county contracts for the purpose of preparing and submitting the application. B, the road reports as, as the 2019 road condition reports require, required by Texas Transportation Code. Two one five dot zero zero five and two one five dot one eight. C, the County Transportation Infrastructure Fund, object list. And D, the designation of a county contact person. Authorize the county contact person to prepare and or execute documents, documents on behalf of the county in matters relating to and regarding to text dot CTIF grant and grant program.
Looks like we lost some people.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody pushed the wrong button?
I don't know.
We lost Warren Edgar.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You want to give them just a little bit to get, see if they can get back?
Yeah, let's do that. They're reading their packet.
I lost internet connection. I just got a text from Lisa.
Oh. Tried Lisa's phone too.
Lisa's too tall for the internet.
Yeah. We just, we just thought of. Well, him and.
Judge Meyer? Hello?
Bet?
Judge Meyer?
Yes.
Hey, this is Burn. I guess we got disconnected somewhere. I don't know how far.
We just, we haven't, we just stopped. We saw y'all disappear.
Okay, everybody disappeared or just?
You and Gary and Lisa disappeared.
Okay. All right. So we, we want to continue? Like, I can continue on the phone Judge.
Sure.
Okay, and this grant, uh, recommendations or this stuff, the requirements, you know, have to be spelled out in order to, to get this. And today is the final day for this. And all we're doing is just. Getting this in the minutes, saying all this was done and getting turned in. So. I am the contact in, in this grant. And you are authorized to sign it also Judge on certain information that I can't sign. So. If there's any questions on this, let me know. If not, I make a motion that we. Approve, accept, and affirm and ratify the application and allow all of us to sign the document so we can submit it.
Commissioner Hall, I second.
Any more discussion? And once we sign it and get it sent off, it's, it's got to be in by midnight tonight. So we get it signed and, and get it emailed off and work.
Well, the, the application is actually in as we speak, but this is just reaffirming that all of us and all the steps were taken in the, in the, and the court knows everything about the process.
I agree.
It just, it just reaffirm. everything about the process. So it just, it just reaffirming that we, we did the application.
Yes.
But we're, we're, we're going to submit this anyway.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So all of us got to make a point to today somehow get there to sign that document so we can get it turned in. It's got to be signed today on the 27th.
Yes.
Judge, John, Mike, can you, can you hear me good?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Put on your phone.
I don't know where my camera is, but anyway.
All right. We go to move on to agenda item number eight, consider taking necessary action to vacate and abandon the portion of, uh, public road in Bayside Beach Unit Number One, Calhoun County. Mr. Hall?
Well, as you can, uh, read, A Marie's, uh, uh, email part of the packet was, uh, part two of Tommy Hunt saga. This was, this happened with a swap of land. Now we're abandoning, uh, the roadway that puts his, uh, family house been built, built right after, what is it? Sixty, late 61. And, uh, and where all the property lines moved around out there and was, uh, somehow put in the middle of a county roadway easement that goes absolutely nowhere. And this just finishes up, uh, fixing some of that out there.
We can only hope that everyone would do what Mr. Hunt has done, and, um, then we would have everything straight out at Bayside Beach. Um, so if you will recall, you agreed to a swap of property where y'all received the waterfront that was showing that he owned, um, there on, on the beach and gave him inland property that belonged to the county. They, they, was a property swap. And then now this roadway is being closed between him and his sister. Uh, each of them, in your order, receive half the, uh, right of way. Uh, and then his sister is going to deed it to him. And, uh, and then he'll have, he'll actually show on the tax rolls where he is.
Certainly, yes.
This, this'll just complete the process.
Well, Commissioner Hall, I move to, uh, uh, approve the vacating and banning of pushing the roadway, Bayside Beach, uh, Number One.
Mr. Send me a second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Emery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then item number nine, consider taking necessary action to adopt a resolution to rename investment zones in Calhoun County.
This is me again. Um, it's the strangest thing. So we have been naming reinvestment zones the same so we could keep up with them for as long as I've been practicing law. We've used the year dash the abatement number. Um, and so these two reinvestment zones that still exist, they're still within their five-year designation period. One of them is named 1701, and the other one is named 1901. And it's 17 dash 01 and 19 dash 01. And the comptroller has said that does not meet the requirements of their office that they have now published. And we asked them why, because they're a number, just like their instructions said. So we, we switched emails with them. All in all, I, I think it's that they do not like the dash. But, um, on the other hand, they said they need to be number one, number two. So I guess we just have to, um, we will personally keep up with, as the court will, uh, just what year they were granted and so forth. We felt like it, it, it helped the process, but apparently comptroller does not think so. So with the currently designated zones, we are asking that the, um, court rename the Formosa Plastics Corporation Texas Reinvestment Zone Number 17 dash 01 to Formosa Plastics Reinvestment Zone Number One. And the, um, 1901 to Formosa Plastics Reinvestment Zone Number Two.
That's so the comptroller can accept.
Yeah, yeah, right. So we can stop getting phone calls. That's Jesse just keeps getting phone calls. So, so we will do that from now on in the future. Um, so.
Is it only two affected, Emery?
Yes, because the, the other ones have already expired.
Okay. Last move, Commissioner List.
Compared areas, what we're going to send to them.
Yes. And we will do that from now on in the future.
Commissioner Hall, I second.
More discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the judge.
Was in Fort Connor, Texas, from 30 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour with the sec, uh, section of Park Avenue, which will, will remain at 15 miles per hour, and State Highway 185, which will remain at Texas posted speeds.
Judge, this has been becoming, uh, being an ongoing problem. Uh, those streets down there in Fort Connor are often narrow. And, uh, they're, they're too narrow for the posted speed limit. The traffic is increasing by leaps and bounds in that town down there. And, uh, I believe that the sheriff is speaking for that also. They've, they've been having a lot of problems down there. I think especially this last weekend, they had a lot of problems. We're requesting to, uh, lower that speed limit within the, uh, in the bounds of State Highway 185 area within the territory.
We'll close the public hearing and reconvene on regular session. Agenda item number 13, consider taking necessary action to reduce the speed limit on all county roads in Fort Connor, Texas from 30 miles an hour to 20 miles per hour, with the exception of Park Avenue, which will remain 15 miles per hour, and State Highway 185, which will remain at Texas posted speeds.
Commissioner Reese, I vote, uh, to reduce the speed limits on all county roads in Fort Connor, Texas from 30 mile an hour to 20 mile per hour, with the exception of Park Avenue, which remains at 15 mile an hour, and State Highway 185, which will remain at Texas posted speeds.
Commissioner List, he's second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 14, consider taking necessary action regarding tax abatement for, uh, Swift Energy Company, which is the, uh, solar panel energy company that supposedly is going to go in off of, uh, 2143. I talked to, uh, Mr., uh, Wesley with the, uh, Energy Corps. I told him we weren't interested in doing it. He keeps calling. So I just want to get it on court, official, whether we're gonna supply tax abatement or not.
Judge, any, none of the counties around are, are giving tax abatements for these things?
Not that I know of. I know San Patricio County does not do tax abatements for solar or wind. And they have a lot of wind generators down there. In conversation with, uh, Senator Colkhurst, I brought this up to her, and her recommendation was not to give them one penny. They get lots of federal assistance as it is without us having to, uh, make exceptions to them.
But Judge, they don't even meet our criteria.
No.
No.
They don't.
So I mean, we're not going to change our criteria. It's going to fall in it. They only employ one person. I don't see benefit for it.
He did come back and say that they thought they could eliminate that and could possibly employ up to 10, but I don't think we should do this with the solar deal personally.
I'm not a fan of the judge.
Me neither.
No, I'm not either, sir.
I move that, uh, Calhoun County does not, uh, grant Swift Energy, Swift Current Energy, uh, tax abatement.
Mr. Hall, I second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 15, consider taking necessary action to accept donations from Jack and Barbara Campbell of $50, M A Mac Adams, $25, and Russell and Sherry Kane, $50 in memory of Curtis Foster. They didn't specifically say where this money wanted to go, so we'll just take it as a donation to Calhoun County.
You don't think we should reach out and see, Judge, if they had a idea where it needs to go? Where, where does it normally go when we don't?
We can accept the donations today, then ask them how they, they each might want to put it to a different place.
Uh, the, uh, Russell and them, they usually donate to the EMS or something like that. But, uh. Well, it's not the kind of email is museum memorial donations. Right. Let's, let's accept them and see if, if they, and then we can always move them to another fund if we have to. I move we accept the donations. Commissioner List.
Commissioner Hall, I second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then item number 16, consider taking necessary action to accept a contract from Tyson Crook Elevator for, uh, $109,528 to repair the sheriff's elevator, Sheriff Department elevator.
Are they single source on this elevator? Or are they by board or source well?
I believe they're single source, uh, because it's a Thuson Corp, uh, elevator system.
Judge, uh, they're source well?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So I'll have to go out for beds then, okay? Man, what was wrong with it?
The internal working, but working pretty much all together. The, the, the casing and the, and the shaft and all the stuff are good, but the, the boards and some of the internal parts are no longer working. They're just old, I guess. It hasn't worked now in.
I showed water damage and, uh, insurance is going to cover all but the deductive.
Commissioner List, I saw move.
Commissioner Hall, I second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 17, consider taking necessary action to accept a check for insurance proceeds from TAC in the amount of $74,169.60 for the repair of the Sheriff Department elevator.
Commissioner List, I saw move.
To raise, I second.
More discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consider taking necessary action to acknowledge overpayment on FEMA DR 4332 Hurricane Harvey and authorize a refund to the Texas Division of Emergency Management as follows. Number one is BW 3241 donated resources, $620, $626.75. Number two is, uh, BW 5498 Emergency Protective Measures, $327.54.
Commissioner Hall, I move that we acknowledge the overpayment on FEMA DR 4332 Hurricane Harvey and authorize a refund to TM.
Commissioner Reese, I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And item number 19, consider taking necessary action to adopt the formal budgetary and financial manag, management policies.
Cindy, is this the one that was, uh, needing to be changed for G L O and that C D V G D R grant and HUD stuff?
Yes, sir. That is what prompted this, but I think it's a good idea going forward for any kind of funding that we're seeking.
Can you give us a brief synopsis on what changed?
There's really nothing that changed, Commissioner. It is essentially just stating everything that we do according to, uh, governmental accounting principles and according to state law. It's just kind of a one size fits all instead of saying, we're governed by tax code for this, we're governed by local government code for that. It just kind of puts everything together. I, I don't know of anything that really changed other than what we always do.
Commissioner Hall, I move that we, uh, adopt the formal budgetary and financial management policies. Commissioner List, a second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number 20, consider taking necessary action on accepting a donation from Lester Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $5,484 for work performed on Gin Road ditch. Commissioner List?
Yes, uh, Lester Contracting, when we, uh, we did the bridge on Gin Road, this was back before Harvey. Uh, the weather was wet when he could work. Uh, it was dry when he couldn't get out there. So it took almost three years for them to complete the project. And he felt, uh, compelled that he should donate some of the, the work because it took so long. So we're going to accept this so he can write this off on his income tax. So I saw move that we accept the donation from Lester Contract in amount of $5,484.
Mr. Reese, I'll second.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-one, consider taking necessary action regarding the Calhoun County continuity of the operations plan, the COAT plan.
We enacted this twenty-fifth, didn't we, of March? Is, uh?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And it actually did not have a ending date, but we, uh, go ahead and, uh, as of Monday, June first, we're gonna get back to normal, everybody come back to work.
So we end this when on May thirtieth would be the end date?
There was a date of May twenty-ninth to float around. I don't know where it came from, but, uh, May thirtieth will be fine and we'll start June the first.
Well, I move we, uh, in the Calhoun County continuity of operation plan on May thirtieth.
Commissioner Simms, be a second.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-two, consider taking necessary action to authorize county judges to sign lease agreements with Great American Financial for two copiers and one, uh, plat printer scanner at County Clerk's Office. These agreements are for five-plus years each. County Clerk, do you have anything to add or is this okay with you?
Um, this is Catherine. Um, our lease is actually up on our, uh, copier. And so we chose the option of a multifunctional copier, which we do not have now. And the plat scanner will be a great attribute because we can put that on our Eagle system as opposed to having it on Laserfish. So it's more user-friendly for the public to find plats.
Great. Commissioner List, I saw move.
Commissioner Hall, I second.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-three, consider taking necessary action to pre-approve expenditures in, in Alumet County or UC officer, Calhoun County policy with LGC one three zero nine zero eight. Mr., uh, Mr. Simms, do you have anything?
No, sir, not this time. We can pass on it.
Alright, we'll just pass on it. Agenda item number twenty-four, separate books from following county office, uh, Calhoun County, uh, Treasurer for March twenty twenty.
Commissioner Reese, so move.
Commissioner Simms, a second.
More discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-five, consider taking necessary action on any necessary budget adjustments. We've got two that are both, uh, year twenty twenty.
Commissioner Hall, I move to be approve, approve, uh, budget adjustments.
Commissioner Reese, I'll second.
More discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-six, approval of bills of payroll?
I move we pay MMC bills. Total payables payroll electronic bank payments in the amount of eight hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred forty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, total transfer between funds, two million, six hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred twelve dollars and eighty-seven cents. Total nursing home UPL expenses, three million, four hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty cents. Total intergovernmental transfers, one million, four hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. For grand total disbursements approved May twenty-seven, twenty twenty, in the amount of eight million, four hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and three cents.
Commissioner List, he's second.
More discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Commissioner Hall, I move we pay county bills dated five twenty-seven of twenty twenty. Total vendor disbursements, six hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Payroll for five twenty-nine of twenty twenty is also the total payroll amount in the amount of three hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and twelve cents. For a total amount for approval, nine hundred ninety-two thousand, eighty dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Commissioner List, he's second.
More discussion? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Any concerns?
Y'all have a good day.
Good day.
Oh, later.
Uh, gentlemen.
See y'all, aye?
Take care.